All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 10th meeting of the Sacramento County Planning Commission. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Martinson?
Here.
Holley?
Here.
Hom?
Here.
Tatisi?
Here.
Shelby?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. See, folks in the audience tonight, if you would like to speak on any of the agenda items, there's a tablet in the back and we ask that you fill out that form so we know who would like to speak for which item. And we'll go ahead and swear, folks, in tonight, so can you please stand if you wish to speak on any of the items?
Including applicants?
Including applicants.
Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth so help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn. Thank you.
Okay. We'll get going. Please call the first item.
Item number one, PLMP 2019-00087, Special Development Permit and Design Review, located at 6241 Fair Oaks Boulevard, approximately 500 feet south of Marconi Avenue in the Carmichael Community. The environmental document is exempt.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Meredith Holsworth. I'm the project manager for the Milagro Monument Sign Special Development Permit Project. The request is for a special development permit to allow the proposed monument sign to exceed the size and height restrictions that are laid out in the Fair Oaks Main Special Planning Area, as well as an additional special development permit request to allow the number of monument signs to exceed one on this one single parcel. This does include a design review to comply with countywide design guidelines. This is an overview of the zoning of the site, just showing where the SPA boundaries are. That's the light gray color showing the existing shopping center in the SPA zoning and surrounded by SPA zoning. This is an aerial of the site. This is the Milagro Shopping Center off Fair Oaks Boulevard, and you can see on the southern property boundary is where the existing sign and the new sign will be going to replace it. So this is the existing sign I mentioned on that southern driveway of the existing shopping center from both sides of the sign. And the sign will be replaced with, looks like this. It'll be going in the same footprint, but it's just taller and a larger size. This sign will get more visibility for some of the existing tenants that are in the shopping center and uses a color scheme that matches the shopping center color palette. This is the gateway sign that's on the northern driveway. The fountain sign is on either side of the entrance of the driveway and the gateway goes over it. As I mentioned, the proposed sign will replace that existing one you saw photos of, and that'll be at the southern driveway. The reason for the special development permit is that it exceeds the height restrictions and the square footage standards that are in that, outlined in the Fair Oaks Main SPA. This project was reviewed by the Carmichael CPAC on June 19th of last year. Received unanimous approval with no members of the public in attendance, and the DRAC reviewed it shortly after that, found it to be in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines, and staff is recommending approval of the project with conditions. The actions that we are recommending are to recognize the exempt status of the request under CEQA, to approve the special development permit, and to find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, subject to the conditions of approval that are in your attachment to the report. So that concludes staff presentation. We have the applicant here as well, and I can take any questions at this time.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, we'll have the applicant come up.
Hi.
Just want to make sure you are in agreement with all the conditions and give you an opportunity to say anything you'd like.
Nope, just trying to get the sign installed.
Okay, great. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll entertain thoughts, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, item number two, is PLMP 2019-00230, Use Permit and Design Review, located at 14111 Joy Drive, approximately 500 feet west of South Lincoln Way in the Southeast Community. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Kimber Gutierrez, and I'll be presenting the proposed Gonzalez Farms AT&amp;T Cell Tower project. So the proposed project is located at 14111 Joy Drive, approximately 500 feet west of South Lincoln Way in the Southeast Community. The subject parcel is surrounded by the City of Galt, creating an unincorporated Sacramento County island within Galt city limits. The county island is within City of Galt's sphere of influence, and an annexation application is currently being processed for this area. The subject parcel is generally flat and developed with a single-family residence, agricultural structures, and contains storage of portable toilets utilized for agricultural purposes. And the subject parcel is zoned by the county as AR5, so Agricultural Residential, five acres. And the yellow area is the City of Galt. So the request before you today is a use permit to allow a new unmanned wireless communication facility, so a monopole tower and related ground equipment within a 1,600-square-foot lease area on the subject parcel in the AR5 zone, as well as design review to comply with countywide design guidelines. Here is the site plan, and then also an enlarged site plan of the lease area. It is proposed to be located in the central eastern portion of the site. The monopole tower and associated ground equipment would be completely enclosed within the lease area by a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with tan vinyl slats and barbed wire. Access to the lease area would be provided by a 16-foot-wide access easement from a new driveway on Joy Road. Optical fiber and electric utility lines would also be installed underground within the utility easement, which would be within the access road, so they would overlap each other. Here are the north and west elevations of the proposed monopole tower, so it would be 55 feet in height within, and the mounted equipment would be enclosed within a faux-water tower structure. As proposed, the monopole tower would support one wireless carrier, which would be AT&amp;T, with capacity to support a co-location opportunity for a second wireless tower, carrier, in the future. Here are some photo simulations. So the top left is the view from Joy Drive, looking southwest, southeast. Top right is the view from Ellis Circle, so the adjacent, south-adjacent residential subdivision, looking northwest. The bottom left is another view from that subdivision, from Dorothy Lane, looking northeast. And the bottom right is the view from South Lincoln Way, looking southwest. So an initial study and negative declaration was prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for this project and released for public review on December 19th of 2019. It was determined that the project would result in no impact or a less-than-significant impact to all environmental resource topics analyzed. Nonetheless, mitigation has been provided for avoidance of migratory burdeness, as well as insurance of appropriate treatment should cultural resources or human remains be uncovered during project implementation. Additionally, two comment letters were received, so from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, as well as the Department of Toxic Substances Controls. They included recommendations and general information, so staff provided a response to comments as part of the staff report. The Southeast Community Planning Advisory Council, so CPAC, met on September 26th of 2019 and recommended denial of the proposed project. Five members of the public spoke in opposition, stating concerns regarding health issues, proximity to residential neighborhoods, and potential reduction of property values. The CPAC members clearly indicated that their denial vote was not related to perceived health and safety impacts, but they indicated that it was mostly to do with, sorry, mostly to do with the public testimony regarding property values, lowering the property values. Due to the current annexation application for the county island, the City of Galt requests denial of the proposed project as is within a pending annexation area. And the Design Review Advisory Committee met on October 10th of 2019 and recommended the project be found in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines because of the faux-water tower design. The proposed project has been designed in as sensitive a manner as possible. However, despite the thoughtful design, monopoles within water towers are still recognizable and will be noticed by people within and surrounding the neighborhood. The design is proposed to minimize the visual impact by creating a structure that is more compatible with the agricultural, residential, and open-space character of the parcel and the surrounding area. Further, the applicant has demonstrated the need for a cell tower in this area due to a coverage gap. So with the project, the overall coverage in the area will be improved, enhancing public safety during emergency events. And then, so, given that, given the coverage gap, the public safety benefit, and the necessity for cell and radio towers in all land use zones to ensure proper coverage, the benefits of the project outweigh the minor aesthetic impacts caused by the visibility of the project or perceived potential impact to lower property values. So therefore, although there is opposition to the proposed project, it is consistent with the general plan, consistent with the zoning code, and will provide community and public safety benefits. Therefore, per staff recommends the following on the screen to the planning commission, that you approve the project and determine the environmental analysis adequate and complete, and adopt the negative declaration, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve the use permit, and find the projects in substantial compliance with countywide design guidelines.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions of staff?
I do have a question. I just want to confirm that this is not one of the 5G that would have kind of an express or expedited or streamlined process that we talked about a few months ago? So this is not, not part of that?
No, it's not the 5G. It is subject to the normal shot clock process is part of the, is part of the review of wireless communication facilities, though.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. Good evening, Kimber.
Hi.
Couple of questions. The faux-tower enclosure, what's material?
I believe the material's wood.
It's fiberglass panels.
We gotta, we gotta add that.
Oh, sorry.
We'll have the applicant come up in just a sec.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe I'll save the questions.
Save that for the applicant, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? I have a question about the status and timeframe of annexation. It says they have a application pending, I'm assuming with the LAFCO. Sometimes those can be very lengthy, year-long processes than some. Just curious as to if it's towards the beginning, towards the middle, towards the end of that process.
We actually have a representative from the City of Galt here, and if you'd like, they can answer that question for you.
Okay, I'll save that question for them. Thank you. Okay, thank you all. Call the applicant up.
Good evening. My name is Karen Leonard, and I represent AT&amp;T. I have been sworn. Staff did a very good job describing the project. We feel like this is a good project in the sense that it's going to allow us to provide coverage in residential areas without, with minimal impact by being in the AR5 on this existing ag use and with the use of the water tower. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know there was one about the materials.
Yeah, these are mainly architectural-related questions. So the, the material, the faux-tower, per se, is fiberglass panels that simulate like wood panels?
Yes. So basically, we go to a company that specializes in these panels for the radio frequency. So they'll design it to look like wood, but they will be fiberglass panels.
And did you talk with the county design review in terms of, was there any consideration of putting graphics? Because a lot of times on water towers, there's graphics like City of Galt or something. Or did you want it basically innocuous brown tower there? I mean, was there any thought given to putting graphics on it?
Yeah, they had actually recommended we do something on that. Our idea is to have Gonzalez Farms on this tank.
Okay. But nothing has been graphically depicted yet, I'm guessing, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And was this at the request of the community, or this is something that AT&amp;T, like, I know we used to have those very strange fake trees. Is this, is this like the next iteration of that, or was, did somebody request this particular design?
Well, I mean, the way the ordinance is written, for one, the fake trees are discouraged if there's not existing tree coverage. We've gotten much better at our trees, but, but they make more sense in an area where there are, there is tree coverage. So, you know, we do a lot of the monopines, as we call them, and, you know, the Lake Tahoe Basin, you don't even know they're there because there's already pine trees. This one would be a pine sticking out by itself. So the water tank design just seemed to make a little more sense. So this was our proposal.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? And you're, I'm assuming, in accordance with all the conditions?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will open the public comment period, although I do not have anybody signed up currently. Would like to hear from the representative from the City of Galt.
Good evening. Chris Arias, Community Development Director for the City of Galt. I think you asked a question about timing. We have not gone to city council yet, so we're probably about eight months to a year out before LAFCO application. So, and after that, it probably takes another six months. So we're anywhere between a year and a year and a half before formal annexation into the city.
Okay.
I want to thank the planning department for Sack County. They've done a great job of keeping us in the loop. We actually like the water tower as compared to the fake tree. I don't know if you're familiar with the City of Galt logo, but it actually has a water tower on it, so it is somewhat appropriate. What I am a little bit concerned about is, we do have that land area designated for low-density residential, and, you know, the facility looks good. The chain link with barbed wire can be a visual problem as we develop in that area, but the water tower itself is actually a nice touch, and we certainly prefer that over the fake tree.
Okay. Any other questions?
So just to reiterate, the application has not been filed, or?
Not with LAFCO. So they do have an op, an application in with the city. The application is for a subdivision that's adjacent or nearby the island. We're incorporating the island for a couple reasons. One, to ensure access to the new subdivision, and then really to get rid of governance problems and have more control over that area ourselves.
Okay. Go ahead.
May I ask a question of AT&amp;T's representative?
Are we done with City of Galt?
Yeah, City of Galt.
Okay.
It sparked another question, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bring the applicant back up.
Hi. Based upon Chris's comment, you know, the consideration of possibly low-density housing getting closer to the tower, would AT&amp;T be opposed to putting something like a split-faced masonry block or some sort of decorative block wall versus a chain-link fence around the facility?
No, I don't see that to be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other?
I have, I have to ask Commissioner Hom a question on that. Was it your intention to say that you would think that would be a good condition of this application, or just kind of a curiosity about what might happen in the future?
I'm thinking of possibly, I'm thinking about actually making, if we vote, if I vote for approval, is to make that a condition, to make a decorative block wall instead of the chain link, because my thinking, if you don't do it now, it'll probably never happen. So, so if we're going to ask for it, ask for it now. This is my thinking.
Thanks for the clarification.
Let me close the public comment period, and then we'll get to discussion. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay. And is that your motion that you would like to propose?
Before I do that, I would like to encourage, because I assume DRAC is going to take one more look at the tower design?
So they would not, under, under the current conditions of approval, there can, could be a, an addition of a condition that requires a subsequent design review for both the logo design that they mentioned during the meeting, as well as this block wall.
Okay, great. That case, before I make a motion, does anybody else have comments?
Did we need to work on the actual wording when I put your proposal?
Well, what I was thinking about making a condition approval is have, just go, you know, have DRAC review for potential logos, design of a logo on the tower, so it's not so bland, per se, because when I see water towers, I see usually this decorated with some sort of logo that's complementary to the community and may be acceptable to City of Galt. And actually work on a decorative masonry block wall. I'm going to say what type of masonry, with split-faced block, brick, whatever, the DRAC feels is appropriate for the community. And then make those two additional conditions to the conditions of approval.
Counsel, do we need to be more specific?
Yeah. Are you requiring a masonry wall?
Yes.
Okay.
You're giving discretion to DRAC to determine?
Whether it's split-faced, running bond brick, you know, just some sort of masonry, decorative masonry wall.
Yeah, the condition should just be clear that you, the condition is to require a masonry wall.
Yes.
With DRAC review of the wall and?
And the logo on the tower.
Any comments, concerns?
Can I just say, I recommend staff recommendations plus what I just talked about? Is that clear enough?
I think so. We were working on trying to craft a condition. I think what we would like it to read is something along the lines of, prior to building permit, applicant shall apply for a non-discretionary design review to review the designs for the logo, as well as the masonry wall around the wireless communication facility.
Okay. I can go with that.
Anybody like to second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Our next item, please.
Item number three, PLMP 2018-00291, Community Plan Amendment, Rezone, Tentative Subdivision Map and Design Review, located at 8989 Lemus Road, approximately 1,115 feet east of Elk Grove Florin Road in the Vineyard Community. Environmental document is a mitigated negative, mitigated negative declaration.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Bohulie, I'll be providing the staff presentation for the Napa Valley subdivision project. The subject site is a roughly three and a, 3.1-acre infill site located at 8989 Lemus Road in the Vineyard Community. The property is depicted in red on the slide, and as you can see, the property includes an 1,100-foot-long residual access drive named Lemus Road that provided access to the larger site. The applicant is requesting a bundle of entitlements, including a community plan amendment, a rezone, a tentative subdivision map, and a design review. This slide provides a little more detail on the requested entitlements. The applicant requests a community plan amendment to the Vineyard Community Plan for 2.6 acres from AR10 to RD5, and then half an acre, which is the Lemus Road property, from RD20 to RD10 and RD5. The rezone is for 2.6 acres from Agricultural 10 to RD5. The tentative subdivision map provides the division of 3.1 acres into 14 single-family lots, and then also a Lot 15 for the Lemus Road property. And then, as I mentioned before, the design review to comply with the guidelines. This slide depicts the tentative subdivision map with the 14 residential lots. You can make out a portion of Lot 15, which is Lemus Road, on the bottom-left portion of the slide. The 14 lots will be served by a cul-de-sac named Bailey Court, and will, and therefore there is no longer a need for the Lemus Road connection to the site. I should also point out that the two northern lots, Lots 1 and 14, which are corner lots on Bailey Court, will have bio-retention drainage areas, and those will be included as part of the map to address drainage for the site. And those areas will be maintained by a homeowners' association. To review the key points for the project, the project is comprised, or the property, rather, is comprised of one legal parcel with two accessory parcel numbers, and it includes a private drive, Lemus Road, connecting to Elk Grove Florin Road, which I mentioned earlier. The applicant's proposed tentative subdivision map will be accessed from Napa and served by that Bailey Court cul-de-sac. There were, or there have been, community concerns that have been brought up regarding Lemus Road and nuisance activity that occurs on Lemus Road. And so there, it has been a desire since the submittal of the application that we address Lemus Road through this process. A majority of Lemus Road is bordered by backyards of single-family homes. There is the Church of Latter Day Saints on to, on the south portion of the Lemus Road property, southwest portion of the property. But other than that, it's all single-family home backyards. The applicant did have a, a community meeting and has been working diligently with the property owners on Napa Valley to look at transferring land through boundary line adjustments to them as part of this process. And the result of those neighborhood meetings has been a, a more detailed plan to process those boundary line adjustments. This exhibit has been put together by the applicant in details of those proposed boundary line adjustments that would be made to provide Lemus Road to the consenting property owners on Napa Valley Way. There is a condition of approval that I will speak to later that requires these boundary line adjustments to be initiated and completed prior to final map, and in a manner consistent with this exhibit. The following are recommendations from the appropriate advisory committees for this project. The Vineyard CPAC reviewed the project on April 2nd, 2019, and there were a number of neighbors present at that meeting, many of whom were impacted by the proposed boundary line adjustments, and some with concerns about privacy and compatibility with the proposed subdivision. Following discussion, the CPAC recommended approval of the project, subject to a prohibition of two-story homes in the subdivision. The Design Review Advisory Committee met on April 11th and recommended the project be found in substantial compliance with the Design Review Guidelines. They did comment on a couple of items. The first is that they had quite a bit of discussion about the corner lots and wanting to make sure that those corner lots were well-integrated into the neighborhood, and suggested orientation of those corner lots to be towards Napa Valley, rather than interior to the, to the cul-de-sac. And then they also stressed the importance of including variation in heights, single and two stories, and variation in sizes to, again, create a, a more interesting neighborhood, a more aesthetically interesting neighborhood. This slide is an enhanced version of the tentative subdivision map and shows the applicant's response to the county and Design Review Advisory Committee's comments to orient lots 1 and 4 towards Napa Valley Way with wraparound porches and walking paths to Napa, Napa Valley Way. The illustration also shows the roughly 3,000-square-foot bio-retention drainage areas. Just want to take some time to highlight a couple of the conditions of approval that are of note. Condition of approval four states that within 30- Condition of Approval 4 states that within 30 days of approval of the tentative subdivision map, the lot line adjustments will be applied for through the county. Condition 5 requires that prior to the filing of the final map, that those lot line adjustments would be completed and that a certificate of compliance would be obtained. Condition 6, and all of the other conditions, I guess I should note, are applicable to lots 1 through 14. Lot 15 is, Condition of Approval 4 and 5 are specific to Lot 15. Condition 6 requires the establishment of an HOA, and then Condition 7 requires a subsequent design review for the buildings, and will include the review to ensure that there's privacy, that privacy concerns are addressed as part of any two-story homes that are proposed, if any are. Staff's analysis and recommendation, we have reviewed the project and believe that the requested entitlements are consistent with the surrounding residential development, that this is an infill project that well integrates into the neighborhood, and that the project also, through the nondiscretionary design review, we will be able to review and ensure that this, that the privacy concerns are addressed. The following are recommended actions to the Board of Supervisors. Determine the environmental analysis is adequate and complete. Adopt the mitigated negative declaration, then adopt the MMRP. Approve the resolution to amend the Vineyard Community Plan. Adopt the ordinance to rezone the subject property. Approve the tentative subdivision map, and then find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant team is here as well.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we move on to applicant? Go ahead.
Hi, Chris. On the lot line adjustments, so it's part of the conditions, and excuse me if it's in here and I didn't read it, that the developer has to put the new fence around the expanded properties, per se? Or, because the lot line moves, so who takes care of the new fence around this expanded property?
Yeah, we can have the applicant comment on that. My recollection is that the, that there will be some, that the applicant team will be working with the property owners. I know that there was an allowance for a certain amount of money for some of the fencing to be done, but that the applicant will be working with the property owners to implement a fence that works for all of the property owners.
And for those two properties that decide not to be included, so the adjacent property gets the funny dog leg around their property.
That's correct. That's correct.
And then, one last question. I didn't read in the condition approval, so their staff is not saying no second two-story houses. All they're saying is Drack will work to ensure privacy in the design. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are not carrying forward the recommendation from the CPAC about a prohibition on two-story homes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you. Will the applicant come up, please?
My name's Jack Kautz. I'm the applicant for Lemus Road.
I need to hear that you accept all the conditions of approval, and then perhaps you can address the question about fencing.
So in the fencing, we've been working with the property owners that border either side of Lemus Road, and we've had meetings and different ideas, and what we're going to do as far as the fencing's concerned is give them allowance, $500, you know, for the fence, once the fence is completed, to assure that the fences actually do go in. And as far as the lot line adjustments, we're going to do all their survey and actually pay for that as it goes through. So essentially, what we're doing is we're giving them the property behind their house, giving them property.
So if the fence costs more than $500, it's up to that particular property owner to make up the difference? Should they want to fence in their newly acquired additional properties, then?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will open the public comment period. I have a few folks on this item. First, we'll call Melissa Cook, followed by Sheri Drummond.
Hello. I'm Melissa Cook. I've lived in the Napa Valley subdivision for 10 years now, and I do have some concerns. Specifically, the lack of communication. When this project started, we found out about it by just overhearing people talking about it over the fence. We weren't come, we weren't approached directly, either by letter or, you know, someone coming to the door and saying, hey, we're going to start ripping out these trees, and, you know, you might want to pay close attention to what's going on here. Once the trees started being removed, it damaged a lot of our fencing. My fence was almost destroyed. My dog got out a number of times, and the Realtor, who's here, Sharon's here, helped out a couple of times, went over and made sure that they shored it up to keep him in. But the workmanship on the fencing, and the lack of concern for, you know, well, our pets, our property, some limbs fell and damaged the patio cover. One limb fell from a huge eucalyptus tree and split my crepe myrtle in half. The fence was already in a pretty poor state, and I knew it needed to be replaced. However, it was still vertical and standing for nine years, and suddenly, it was just a shambles, and I wasn't really prepared to replace it right at that time. After some maneuvering over the course of, I don't know, two and a half months or so, finally, they agreed to repair part of it. I'm not even sure why they stopped at the point they did. We were never really approached, and we didn't have a chance to really discuss it all. But the workmanship on the fence was poor. They didn't anchor the posts in any kind of cement. They were just flush with the ground, which kind of means that, well, it's not stable. It's wobbling, and so there's that. The two-story aspect is still up in the air. I was quite surprised just now to hear that it's not certain whether or not these are going to be two-story. It just seems like we are sort of in the dark about what's going to take place behind our properties. And I have to say that I completely disagree that this does not blend in well if it were to be two-story. It doesn't blend in well with the existing homes. They're all single-story that surround that particular acreage back there. And I'm most surprised to hear that it's a homeowners' association. I was pleased that maybe it's going to be a mix of two and one story. That would make a lot more sense. Otherwise, if you look at the map, it's so landlocked with all these single-story homes, it would look quite strange to have two-story homes just jutting up in the center of this develop, you know, our current subdivision. Again, there's been just a distinct lack of communication, and I was reading through the outreach plan about, you know, reaching out to neighbors within 500 feet, and that really hasn't happened, and I hope that it does. I just basically wanted to just put this on record. I don't know how much impact we can really have. You know, progress will continue, I'm sure, but as this goes forward, I would just hope that Mr. Kautz and his crews take more care than has been taken so far, and communicate maybe a little more directly, and be a little more open. And I would like to hear more if it's going to be two-story or not, and when does that get decided and how?
Thank you. Fair comments. Next, we will have Sheri Drummond.
Hi, good evening. You'll have to bear with me. I'm not a public speaker. I'm used to talking to little Girl Scouts and keeping their attention, so I'm a little nervous. I too back up to the new subdivision. There hasn't been a lot of open, honest communication that's gone on. Our property has been damaged. Myself, my shed, a lot of, I lost a lot of landscape rocks when they tore the fence When the fence was partially repaired, it was pretty subpar. It bows. It almost has its own, you know, kind of vibe to it. It goes in its own direction. And also, we discovered newly this summer that my pool is now leaking. I directly back up to where the well was. So they imploded the well behind my house, and now the whole backside of my waterfall leaks. We're also concerned over the two-story homes. I have three little girls. I have a swimming pool in the backyard. When we bought this house, there was a lush, practical forest back there that someone did live at. As much as I would love for it to still be there, I know that homes are going in, but I really don't want the possibility of people now being able to just peer over our fences. There's really no way to address the privacy unless you're going to put 10-foot fences, which isn't legal. We're really concerned with the dust and debris. A lot of stuff was dropped in our yards. Nothing was cleaned up. It was left for us. Two of my children have asthma. You know, it means keeping them inside in the summer if this is going on further. We haven't really gotten a lot of answers over what's gone on over there, or what was going to go in over there. It's been very vague. Like I said, there was really never any open, honest communication that was going on. We were never given the owner's contact information. We were always passed through the Realtor, and she was responsive when we would contact her, but it was more of a back-and-forth, oh, your shed's damaged. Well, we won't say anything, but we'll just send over a case of wine. That's not what I want. I don't want wine. I'm not even a drinker. I'm interested to see how the homeowners' association will work, because this isn't an area that has a homeowners' association at all going on, so I don't really know how that does or plays in. I'm sorry, I'm just so nervous. And that's pretty much all I had to say.
Okay, great. Thank you. Before we answer some of these questions and call the applicant back up, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay. We'll have the applicant come back up, give a chance to address some of the issues raised by members of the public, and then also staff. I was hoping that you could clarify the process with Drack. There was a question raised about the design review for privacy issues while still aligned for the potential for two-story homes, and what the timeline for that process would be. We'll start with that before we have applicant?
Oh.
Oh. Just take one, one sec.
Sure. So the thought would be that the home designs would come back in through a nondiscretionary design review process. Those, that design review process does not include a mailing to property owners within 500 feet of the site. However, the information is uploaded into the Community Project Viewer website, so people can track the project that way. If that is something that is of concern to the Planning Commission, the notification to surrounding neighbors, that's something that we could address through a revision to Condition of Approval Number 7, which is the requirement for the subsequent nondiscretionary design review. That process typically takes, I would say, for a project like this, maybe two to three months to get through a review of the design review and get to an approval.
Okay. Thanks.
Question on Drack, by the way.
Yeah, go ahead.
So is there opportunity when Drack's doing the review for the public to make any comments or to participate in that at all?
There is. The Design Review Advisory Committee is a, is a public meeting. It's noticed, and we occasionally have members of the public that attend the meeting and provide comments to the advisory committee.
Okay. Great, thank you. Want to give you an opportunity to address some of the comments, if you choose, and perhaps answer some additional questions.
Sure. Okay, as far as the fence, all of our plans are to redo that fence surrounding our property. The reason, well, originally, when we tore the trees down, they're eucalyptus trees, and they're falling apart anyways, and there was a couple houses in there that became drug houses, and they were being used by, you know, their needles and everything inside the houses. So we demoed the houses, imploded the well, and took the trees down. And in the process of taking the trees down, a lot of the fencing was leaning over against the trees at that point, and the fencing was everything from, oh, pickets to, you know, whatever, whatever would make up that fence. So what we did is when we took the trees down, some of the fence fell down, and I thought we addressed their concerns better than it sounds. But we went ahead and had a person come in, repair the fence, put it back up. No, we didn't cement the posts in. The posts weren't cemented in to begin with, but we just put the posts back in, just temporary, until we get the process through the board, and then we're planning on, because the grading's going to be different. We don't know exactly where the fence is going to go, otherwise, we would have did it then. As far as the two-story homes, yeah, we're, we'll work. We don't know. There'll be a mix of single and two-story homes. There're not going to all be two-story homes, and we don't know what that mix is going to be. We just kind of have to go, and, and, once we start laying it out, we'll know more by that point. The two ladies that commented live up towards the front, and, you know, we can really try to make sure that their homes, that her kids in the pool, that there's trees in the back or something, something to block between the home and where her pool is and kids are. In the community outreach, we had four meetings with the community, with the members of Lemus Road, and they all seemed, you know, very supportive and, and pretty much happy.
Questions?
I do, I do have a question. I got a little confused about the fence. Are you allocating $500 per existing residence for the fence, or are you replacing the fence?
Okay, so there's two different fences here. The fence that they call Lot 15 is that Lemus Road corridor, and that's the property that we're giving to the homeowners and doing the boundary line adjustment for the homeowners there. So when the homeowners take their fence, that 25 feet across Lemus Road, whatever distance that is, we're giving them $500 per homeowner towards that fence. The fence that we're talking about here is a perimeter fence around the 14 lots. So it's two different fences. So the 14 lots, once we get in there and go through the improvement plans and figure out exactly where that fence is going to go, if some of it wasn't even on the lot line anyways, then we'd replace that fence at no cost to those people that live around there.
And so, for staff, is that in the condition? I'm sorry, Chris. Is it in the condition that they'll be replacing those fences?
It's not in the conditions, although during our design review, the subsequent design review process, we typically look at fencing as part of that process.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Other questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So it sounds like we've talked about a few things, and I'll just kick it off with, I'm interested in revising Condition 7 to make sure the homeowners are aware of the Drack design review process. So when they are talking about the mix of single and two-story family homes, that you have an opportunity to comment, participate in that process. Hopefully, that should be straightforward enough for staff. Wondering if there are any other thoughts, or?
Of course.
I'm looking at you.
Thank you. My concern is the, along Lemus Road, you know, granted, it's very generous of the applicant to offer $500, but my concern is if the money's given to those particular property owners and they just pocket it and don't do anything, that Lemus Road could turn into a weed patch, and that becomes a blight for the whole community, not just the immediate property. So I'm, I would like to maybe add a condition that the applicant, because I assume the closing of Lemus Road is for the benefit of the applicant. So as such, I would want that fence for all those to be put in, rather leave it at the discretion of those adjacent property owners, because then, if it turns into a weed patch, it's in their backyard and not in an open area that anybody can get into.
Thought, does staff have thoughts on that or other commissioners? Seems like that's a bit of a departure from what's being proposed.
Yeah, I think if, if we want to talk about that a little bit more, we might want to do a quick, a quick break and, and kind of look at the conditions and talk to the applicant and then get back.
But do, I, I guess, is, is my concern clear? What I'm concerned about is, because, you know, like I said, it's nice to get the $500, but what happens, I can see this, you know, pocketing the money and, and no fence ever gets moved. All of a sudden, it becomes a weed area. Who's maintaining it? The nuisance basement has again involved and then it's, you know, somebody light the fire back there and there goes everybody's fence.
Yeah. So I think that one of the things that staff, this is Joel and me from planning, one of the, the things that we heard from the community was that at, at a minimum, that Elk Grove Florin Road, that that accessway was, was fenced. And so I, I think that we can adjourn and, and talk a little bit more about it, but that was at a minimum. We would want to see that be fenced off.
Okay. So, yeah, because somehow we can't just let, willy-nilly that people run back and forth through that area.
Do other commissioners have thoughts on that proposal?
Yeah, I agree with it.
I guess the one challenge is that depending on what type of fencing you have currently, you might want to have some ability for consistency and that, that the option that's included in the condition does have the ability of the homeowners to, A, have a stipend for replacement, B, to also choose their own material to make it consistent with perhaps what they already have in their backyard. But I get the point of, my biggest concern is obviously the, the closure for access point, but I do understand the point. If there are some people that move back and some others that don't, nobody's there to be responsible or abate that property if there's weeds or other issues.
Yeah. I think doing it all at once would help that consistency. Then if we require that it gets done, that it gets done at one time, it's consistent versus, I think you make a great point. Some may do it, some may not. It may do it different times and so that we can get a hodgepodge of different fencing back there.
I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking on it and, and I understand the concerns that are being raised around that. I'm just not, I'm not sure, you know, what's, does the applicant just, are we asking the applicant to just pay for the fencing or, I mean, because I, I agree with the idea though, if, if people have different types, if some people want a stone facade or a cinder block or what have you, is that on the applicant to then match or is that, I mean?
I think my, I understood that you wanted them to essentially replace the fence like they're doing for the other enclosure of the property.
Not, not the entire, just in the expanded area. And then, you know, and again, you bring up some good points, because I'm just thinking that the typical four-inch dog-eared fence, six-foot fence, per standard fence. And again, my biggest concern is having a weed patch behind the existing fence and no one ever takes care of it and it becomes a blight on the community. And I do understand closing it off on each end helps, but I think we also see, it's nothing like putting the weed patch in somebody's backyard that hopefully encourages that homeowner to do something about it. It then be, doesn't become the adjacent property owner's problem.
Yeah. I think staff has asked us for, what, five minutes to?
Yeah.
To propose something. Maybe we'll see what they come up with and maybe come from there.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Can you do the other parts of the agenda?
Okay. It looks like folks are coming back together. We will reconvene from our recess and turn over to staff.
So we had an opportunity to talk to the applicant and we have some, in one case, a revised condition to a condition of approval seven that we, we'd like to introduce, as well as a new condition.
Correct.
Related to the closing off of Elk Grove, or of Lemus Road at Elk Grove Florin. And so what staff and the, staff is recommending the applicant is agreeing to is a condition that would state that prior to building permit, the applicant would close off Elk Grove Florin at Lemus Road with a, a wood fencing, a wood material fencing project. We are not thinking that, that it makes, that it makes sense at this time to further condition the project for interior fencing in, along Lemus Road. The process for the boundary line adjustments is going to be a pretty dynamic process, given that they're dealing with a number of different property owners. Their intent is to work with those property owners and provide an allowance for those property owners to be able to construct fencing. It is a pretty sizable area that these property owners will be receiving as part of this boundary line adjustment process. So they're, in, in staff's estimation, they're, they're motivated to improve that area and to fence it and to bring it into some productive use for themselves. And so at this point, we're not looking to further condition that or recommend that we further condition that. And the applicant can speak a little bit more to, to that as well. In terms of condition of approval seven, we are looking to make a change to that condition. At the end of the first sentence, where it says lots one through 14, it would read subject to DRAQ review. After that, it would say that a public notification for the DRAQ hearing shall be provided to property owners within 300 feet of the subject site.
Can you just explain a little bit further about the process for the lot line adjustment? That is, so each individual parcel has an application for that lot line. It's not done as a package. Is that sort of the thought process behind why it makes it difficult when we're talking about sort of a long expansive area?
Yeah. It's going to be, as Chris noted, a dynamic process. So it does get packaged in for lot line adjustments and it will start at the lot 14.
We didn't specify for start at lot 14, but it has to be.
One way or the other?
It goes from Elk Grove Florin to, to lot 14.
Okay.
And it'll be done in packages of four. And they will be processed concurrently. So hopefully they'll be done all together, but there's going to be some things that need to be worked out in terms of deeds of trust and a whole bunch of other stuff. So it's going to be dynamic.
Okay. Thank you. Questions of staff before we bring the applicant back up?
Can I ask, Chris?
Yep.
I mean, closing, I'm back to that little piece on Lemus. Closing it off is, is good because then it's, we don't have just anybody walking through there. But let me ask, if the property owners, you know, don't see the advantages of the extra property and they just leave the fence and weeds start growing in there, does, does nuisance abatement have any leeway to say, hey, you know, you're causing a potential hazard for your adjacent neighbors or anything like that? Is there any remedies? Because I'm worried about if you have one good neighbor, but you have another neighbor that's maybe not so good and all of a sudden this big weed patch next to, you know, because, because with our-
I think it would just be subject to the normal nuisance and complaint process through 311, through code enforcement.
But, but there is a process to help remedy that. Because my concern with, you know, with the dryer climates, all, we're talking about wildfires and items like that, anything we do to mitigate is, I think is a win. So.
Sure.
But this, so there is a process?
Just subject to a normal complaint.
Right. A normal complaint.
Yeah. There, there wouldn't be any, anything other than that.
Okay. Great.
Other questions? We can have the applicant come back up, just to make sure you're, it sounds like you look like you were in agreement, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, we're, we're in agreement with what Chris is saying in, in regards to one item. What we're going to do instead of, in the boundary line adjustment paper that we give them, upon them signing it, we'll tell them, you know, when they complete the fence, then we're going to give them $500. So I think that, I can't see your name from here, but.
That's fine.
Addressing your question. So we're not giving them $500 and they can go out to dinner one night and then never do anything with their fence. It's going to say in the paperwork that we sign and they sign, that once we do the boundary line adjustment, once they put that fence in, and then we'll give them $500.
Oh, great. To incentivize them to actually do the fence. Okay, that's a win.
Yes. Yes, exactly. So it's not, it's not a head, it's after.
That's a win.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it. Sounds like we have some additional conditions presented by staff. Any additional thoughts, comments? Anyone like to propose a motion?
I think this one's yours, Alan.
Oh. Okay. Can it be easy as a motion to, for staff recommendations with amendments that Chris just stated?
You should be a little more.
Okay.
Let's go back over them and make sure.
Okay. Maybe you can repeat.
We know which ones.
But the, the edits to the amendment, sorry, Chris, if you want.
Yeah. Bill, you'd like me to read them back into the record?
Yes.
Okay. So again, modification to condition of approval seven, at the end of the first sentence, where it says lots one through 14, it would read subject to DRAQ review. Next sentence would read a public notification for the DRAQ meeting shall be provided to property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. A new condition of approval will be added that states that prior to building permit, applicant shall close off Elk Grove Florin with wood fencing.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Staff recommendations, including what Chris wrote, just read into the record.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is election of chair and vice chair for 2020.
I would like to make a motion to nominate my fellow vice chair, Commissioner Pauli, as chair and Commissioner Shelby as vice chair. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Thank you all.
Any, anything to report, Chris?
I do not have anything to report. I know that we mailed out the, or the clerk's office mailed out a memo on the changes to accessory dwelling units. I don't know if commissioners had any questions about that, but we are in the process of working through some zoning code amendments related to accessory dwelling units to resolve the new state laws with, with our zoning code.
I have, I live in a tiny gated community and each house is standalone, but our garages are attached. I want to put a second story on my garage, just my half.
Perhaps.
Recuse yourself if you're in the unincorporated area.
Yeah. No, I would make enemies for life with that. But it sounds like that's going to be part of the, yeah.
Certainly convert your garage. That, that certainly.
Yeah.
You're able to do that.
Any other scheduling matters?
No.
Nope.
Oh, I, I think the only thing to mention is that we, we will not be having a February, whatever the next date is.
24.
24th. Yeah. That meeting will not occur. We're working on items for the March meeting. It's likely that the first March meeting will occur.
I, I will be out of the state on March, on the, I think it's the 23rd, that meeting. So I, I apologize that I can't attend that one.
Okay.
And I will be out on March 9th.
I will be out as March 9th as well, out of state.
I'll be here on March 9th.
Okay. Well, I, I know, I know that one of the items that we are teeing up for March 9th is in an appeal hearing, so we may need to work on changing that. So, thanks for the heads up.
Yep. All right. No other public comment. We are adjourned.